Welcome to the May 17, 2012 Board Meeting of the Prince George's County Board of Education. Before I begin, please turn off your wireless communications as they tend to sometimes interfere with taping of the meeting. Our Board Member Patricia Eubanks would not be in attendance this afternoon. Mr. Armwood, could you please lead the Board in prayer and the Pledge of Allegiance? Ms. Jackson, call the roll, please.
Ms. Armwood?
Present.
Mrs. Beck?
Present.
Ms. Boston?
Present.
Mr. Barrows?
Aye.
Ms. Jackson?
Present.
Ms. Johnson? Ms. Waller?
Present.
Ms. Higgins?
Present.
Ms. Jacobs?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Colleagues, prior to adopting the agenda for this afternoon, Consent Agenda Item 8.1, Public Charter School Approval of Facility Use Agreement for Excel Academy Public Charter at Matthew Henson Elementary School has been pulled and placed on the Non Consent Agenda for discussion. Item 11.2, which is Board Policy 1600: Community Relations Constituent Services, has been added under New Business as a First Reader. May I please have a motion to adopt the agenda for today's meeting? So moved, thank you, Ms. Waller.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Boston. It's been properly moved and second that we adopt the agenda for today's meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Any objections or abstentions? Saying none, the motion pass. Colleagues, may I please have a motion to approve the April 26, 2012 Board Meeting Minutes?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Boston. Ms. Waller, it's been properly moved and second to approve the minutes for April 26, 2012. Any discussion? Saying none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any objections or abstentions? Motion pass. We will now have a news break entitled "Principal for a Day."
Today is Principal for a Day. So Mr. Baker has actually selected Cherokee Lane.
I'm so excited, I have a radio.
With a radio in hand and a smile on his face, County Executive Ruchern Baker transformed himself into a school principal recently, as he joined 103 other government officials and business people for Prince George's County's Ninth Annual Principal for a Day event. Under the watchful eye of Cherokee Lane Elementary's real principal, Nicole Jackson, Mr. Baker dutifully observed teachers, easily handled lunch duty, and while acknowledging the job's challenges, seemed to be having the time of his life.
This is the hardest job that you could have is being a principal and being a teacher, but it's also one of the most rewarding. You know, I just walked in here and just Cherokee Lane and what Dr. Jackson has done here at this school is phenomenal, just to see the smiling faces of the boys and girls. I have to say, I haven't seen people more excited about being in school than these young people. So while it's a hard job, I'm sure they find it very, very rewarding. I know it's been a pleasure for me to be here this morning. I haven't stopped laughing since I walked in the building.
Designed to foster partnerships between their businesses and the county schools, the temporary principals traditionally offer financial aid, internships, and mentorships while taking away a newfound respect for the school system and especially its principals. Have you done this before?
I have. This is my third or fourth time doing it, and it's always a great opportunity to go see what we're do- what people are doing in the school system. It's a great way to connect the business community with our schoolteachers and just the kids, so they know that the business community cares about them.
Compared to what you normally do, what's this like in terms of intensity and responsibility? Compare the two and tell us what you do.
Well, I mean, to be truthful, I do management as well, but it is completely different. I mean, her position, I mean, she was talking to teachers, I mean, students in the morning, parents in the morning, teachers, to the security staff, to the custodians. I mean, it was just so many multiple cases. Maybe kind of think about how I could better use some of my own time to get more work done, but I was, I was highly impressed.
And this is one of the best newsletters that we can send out as a school system, because these are individuals who, in my opinion, become ambassadors for us. And these individuals can talk about the tremendous challenges that are associated with this work, but more importantly, the tremendous success.
There were few, if any, concessions made for the one-day principals, as they attended meetings, greeted students, handled really big lizards, as did School Board Member Carolyn Boston, and, in the case of State's Attorney Angela Alsobrooks, abandoned the building reluctantly for a fire drill.
Yeah, I thought I was.
What a principal are you gonna be? You're gonna have a fire drill and you're gonna stay inside?
Somebody has to, somebody has to secure the building.
That's why we have one of the secretaries stays inside in case the phone rings, you know, so she can take the phone call.
Despite the rigors of their non-stop day, the rookie principals not only gallantly persevered, but got a thumbs up from their bosses. You look like a principal. Have you, have you ever done this before?
Never, never. This is my first time, and it was an experience. It was enjoyable, but it was, I wasn't, didn't know what to expect.
So he was phenomenal. He was right on point, involved fire drill today, parent concerns today. I think we might have warned him out, but with a little practice, I think he'll be back again for us.
How did Carolyn do today?
Oh, she did a wonderful job, wonderful job. I'd like to have her come back tomorrow so we can really do some things.
What did you learn today about what it takes to be a good principal?
You have to be a facilities manager, an event planner, multitasker, wear good working shoe, running shoes, and above all else, she really, really cares about the children. And, and I know to put my finger on my lips when it's quiet time.
But much as they enjoyed holding the school reins for a day, most of the newbies were not in any hurry to switch careers. For Ms. Boston, maybe it was that gecko.
I wouldn't have your job for the world.
Congratulations and thanks to all the substitute principals for handling an awesome job in their own awesome way. For Channels 96 and 38, this is Dave Zarin reporting.
Thank you, Ms. Boston, for representing the Board in that work. Clearly, sometimes we do need to put ourselves in the shoes of others to understand the work. Thank you. This aft- good afternoon. Congratulations to Rockledge Elementary School. They have achieved certification as a 2012 Maryland Green School. This certification acknowledges schools that successfully fulfill the areas which form the framework of the Maryland Green School Program. And those are professional development, curricula integration, best management practices, community engagement, and celebration. This is a significant accomplishment, representing a whole-school commitment to environmental literacy for staff, students, and community. I think it's also important to note, Dr. Height, I've visited Rockledge Elementary School, and the two, there were two retired teachers who actually spearheaded this project and have donated and volunteered all their time to make sure that Rockledge got that recognition, so congratulations to them and to Principal Seidel as well. The Maryland Association for Environmental and Outdoor Education is hosting the Maryland Green Schools Youth Summit to celebrate this accomplishment for Rockledge. The award ceremony is on June 1st. It is at Sandy Point State Park from 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. Prince George's County Public Schools was honored for being the recipient of the Award of, Awards of Distinction at the 18th Annual Communicator Awards. In the education category, Prince George's County Public Schools was acknowledged for its website and online video for the PGCPS update. Congratulations to our Director of Communications and Dr. Height. The school system revamped its website in September of 2011 to improve navigational ease through content and design enhancements. New features include drop-down menus and tab sections that provide direct access to sub-pages and sites, a larger search engine box that provides more reliable results, and cross-link enhancements that allow access from portal pages and office websites through search engine results. The update is a weekly feature that spotlights programs, students, honors, and upcoming events. The Communicator Awards is an international awards program honoring creative excellence in communications. Distinction winners receive a score of 70 to 89 on a 100-point scale. This award recognizes advancement in marketing and communications. Congratulations, on behalf of the Board, I want to congratulate our Office of Communications and Web Services Staff for their outstanding work. Mr. Coleman, keep up the good work. Our school district will host, Head Start Program will host a Day in May, Family Day this Saturday, which is May 19th, at Highland Park Elementary School in Landover. It will be from 11:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. This event will feature fun activities for all ages, including music, food, vendors, and a moon bounce. The event also offers health information and activities, including help, free health assessments. Kudos to our students. The Washington Redskins linebacker Brian Arakpo visited Kennelworth Elementary School on Friday, May the 11th. He did so to congratulate the school on becoming a touchdown school through the Fuel Up to Play 60 program. Schools that completed all six steps of the program by April 1st were eligible to win. Fuel Up to Play was created by the National Dairy Council and National Football League to encourage students to be active for 60 minutes daily and to fuel up with nutrient-rich foods. The program is sponsored locally by the Mid-Atlantic Dairy Association. More than 50 awards were presented to Kennelworth students for participating in this program. Congratulations to Kennelworth. Teacher Julie Holness, math teacher at Forestville Military Academy, has been selected as the PGCPS Teacher of the Month. Congratulations to her. She began her teaching career as a science teacher in New York City immediately after earning her Bachelor of Science degree from Polytech University Institute, I'm sorry. She has taught at Forestville Military Academy since 1987. Ms. Holness has served as a mathematics department teacher, a coordinate, teacher coordinator for the past three years. She's on the school-based planning and management team. She instituted lunchtime tutoring for students who cannot stay after school, and she's also helped coach the soccer and track teams. Please join me for a moment of silence for the following. Michael Bracy, Inspector, Office of Environmental Safety. Thank you for that moment of silence. Please keep him in your prayers. Alex Baylor, son of Alex Baylor Senior, Office of Environmental Safety. Donna Dillinger, Food Services Assistant at Eleanor Roosevelt High School. And Otis J. Brock III, nephew of Brenda Allen, Purchasing Supervisor, Office of Purchasing and Supply. Thank you for the moment of silence. Please keep yourself posted and up to date on the upcoming events. They're all on the website. I yield to Dr. Height for Superintendent's report.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and good afternoon. Last week, Prince George's County joined communities across the nation in celebrating educators as part of Teacher Appreciation Week. Under the theme "Together We Rise, Reflect, Inspire, Support, and Empower," we encouraged our teaching corps to reflect on why they became educators, to inspire students to dream bigger, to support colleagues through constructive feedback, and use education to empower our community. These principals contribute to great teaching all year long, which ultimately elevates our school system and expands our students' futures. I would like to take a moment to congratulate Jessica Shiri, a second-grade teacher at Perrywood Elementary, on receiving this year's Kristy McCullough Outstanding Teacher Award. Shiri has spent her entire 16-year career in Prince George's County Public Schools and has worked at Perrywood for the last 11 years. Colleagues and parents praised her professionalism, content knowledge, classroom effectiveness, and ability to motivate students in science and math. I also want to extend congratulations to Carrollton and Lewisdale Elementary Schools for winning the statewide school breakfast contest sponsored by the Maryland State Department of Education. Out of the 262 schools that entered, Carrollton took first place for increasing participation in the school breakfast program. Lewisdale placed third. Four other schools, Langley Park McCormick, Riverdale, Rogers Heights, and Spring Hill Lake rounded out the top 10. Prince George's County continues to lead the way in emphasizing the important role that a healthy breakfast plays in preparing students for learning. As most of our high school seniors know, graduation season is quickly approaching. A full schedule is available on our website. I encourage our students to remain focused on their studies and school codes of conduct in these last few weeks, but to also enjoy their time with classmates and teachers. Months and years from now, you will find that the time has passed more quickly than you would have liked. As for the budget situation, the special session began in Annapolis early this week. I joined the Superintendent's in Montgomery County and Baltimore City in submitting a letter to the Governor and our legislative leaders urging them to fully support public education funding. I'm happy to report that the Legislature approved the budget. Prince George's County Public Schools have made significant strides in recent years, even while grappling with massive layoffs and program cuts. We want to extend our heartfelt thanks to all elected and state leaders for making a commitment to public education and maintaining it, maintaining it as a top priority by restoring educational funds. Their commitment to education is crucial to the future success of our students. Madam Chair, that concludes my remarks.
Thank you, Dr. Height. Colleagues, we have some adjustments to the agenda based on moving our discussion item further down, so legislative update, I'm going to read a statement from Mr. Lucci, who cannot be here today, but essentially, he also sent this to us in terms of the end of the special session. So, from Mr. Lucci, Board Members, the House of Delegates approved three pieces of legislation that were passed on Tuesday, May 15th, by the Senate and were sent to the Governor for his signature. He plans to sign these bills on Tuesday morning. Passage of the legislation does in fact prevent the doomsday budget scenario, which would have cost us $51 million in the loss of geographic cost of education index funding and foundation grants. Passage of the Budget Reconciliation and Financing Act, however, places in motion a four-year phase-in of shifting the cost of educators' pension from the state to the counties. This phase-in is preferable to the Governor's original proposal, which would have had an immediate impact. Instead, the phase-in will be as follows: 50% in FY '13, 65% in FY '14, 85% in FY '15, and 100% by the year 2016. 2016 is also when the new compulsory age of education increase law fully kicks in as well. Thank you, Mr. Lucci, for that update, and Dr. Height, thank you for being at the table essentially over these last two days, making sure our budget was, was intact. Okay, colleagues, that now brings us to, I think we can go ahead and move to Consent Agenda.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Under items, items under Consent Agenda, 7.0. I'm asking, I'm submitting for approval, Items 7.1 to 7.8.
Thank you, Dr. Height. Colleagues, is there a motion?
Second.
It's been properly moved, and thank you, Ms. Johnson and Ms. Waller. It's been properly moved and second to accept the consent, approve the Consent Agenda Item 7.1 to 7.8. All in favor?
Aye.
Any objections or abstentions? Saying none, the motion pass.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Now move us to Budget Consent Agenda. I'm submitting for approval Items 8.2 to 8.6.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
Move for adoption.
Thank you, Ms. Waller. Is there a second? Thank you, Ms. Boston. It's been properly moved and second that we adopt the Budget Consent Agenda as proposed by Superintendent Height. All in favor?
Aye.
Any objections or abstentions? Saying none, motion pass. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. That brings us to Non Consent Agenda Items. This is Item 9.1. This is a public school, Public Charter School Approval of Facility Use Agreement for Excel Academy Public Charter School at Matthew Henson Elementary School.
Thank you, Dr. Height. Colleagues, I believe we do have public speakers registered for this item. We have three registered speakers to speak on Agenda Item 9.1, the Public Charter School Approval of Facility Use Agreement for Excel Academy. Excuse me. For those registered, you will speak on the topic for which you have been registered. You may not relinquish your time to any registered or unregistered speaker. We ask that you adhere to these rules. If you make references to individuals, we ask that you use titles rather than names. Our first person is Jan Johnson. Please come forward.
Good afternoon, Dr. Height, School Board Members, all present. I'm speaking on behalf of Excel Academy and our desire to use the closed Matthew Henson Elementary School for next year's school use. Right now, we're in a building located in Riverdale. It's prior Catholic school, St. Bernard's, and there are some concerns we have at the building that we're in now, one being the size of the classrooms. Those Catholic school classrooms really weren't designed to hold 25 or more students per room, and personally, I have the intermediate and middle school grades, and it's very tight to have that many students in some of those small places. We have no playground space for our intermediate students, and that's a problem on recess days and for field day activities. As of now, we use a parking lot that's adjacent to the Catholic Church, and there are inherent dangers just in them using a parking lot. They do have to stop playing when there's traffic coming through, and for that reason, we would like a building with a playground. And the Matthew Henson Building does have playground, a playground with equipment. Where we are now, there's no playground equipment for the students as well. Okay, we have no auditorium or multipurpose room in our present building, and we have a very active music department, and we would like to have a place where we can showcase our students' talents. We're also sharing the space with the Catholic Church. They still presently use the building on the weekends, and that creates a problem on Monday mornings when we come in. The teachers often looking to find furniture or chairs that have been moved, supplies that have been moved from the room during weekend use. Okay, we have no room for growth. We started off K through 5, and we've been adding a grade every year, almost every year since. We're now up to eighth grade, and one of the concerns is we just are out of room to grow. So adding new students, it's created a problem. We've had to borrow space or rent other spaces from the Catholic school as we've expanded our grade levels. The location of the building, it's a crossroads for a lot of foot traffic, and we've had people stumble into the building looking for the church offices. So a lot of traffic back and forth. There is a convenience store, a Mega Mart, located adjacent to the school, and so for that reason, we get a lot of traffic on the parking lot or in the school area that's not related to school business. And the building is very old. It's over 60 years old. The teacher in the neighboring classroom and I, we have to coordinate when we turn on our air conditioners. If we both turn them on at the same time, we blow a fuse. So the old wiring makes it very difficult for a lot of things that need to take place using computers, air conditioners, and the like, the heating in the wintertime. So for all of these reasons, we really would like you to consider our application for Matthew Henson Elementary. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Lisa Butler McDougal.
Good afternoon. I'm Lisa Butler McDougal, Executive Director of Sowing Empowerment and Economic Development located in Riverdale. I'm also a governing board member of Excel Academy Public Charter School. I come before you today to ask you to approve the Facility Use Agreement to allow Excel the utilization of Matthew Henson Elementary School for operations. As a board member, the current facility has become inadequate. It's too small, it's too expensive, and particularly for a school that's being operated by a nonprofit organization. I'm also a parent of two exceptionally bright students in the school, one, Joseph, who is in the seventh grade, and Justice, who is in the fifth grade. They love the school. They love learning, they love their teachers, but what they don't like is being in a facility where, being little boys, you wouldn't think that they would worry about how to dress, but you know, we go through it every morning, whether it's long sleeves or short sleeve because it's too hot or it's too cold. And as a parent, I just don't feel that the environment that they're in is very safe. They developed a hunger for learning, which is represented through their test scores and their grades, and we want to foster that, and the atmosphere is continually threatened and challenged by the facility that they're in. Their Excel has positioned itself as a valuable provider of quality education to the students in the county, and we're proud of our past, we're very excited about our future, and we ask you to join us in that excitement by approving the use of Matthew Henson Elementary School for us. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McDougal. Diane Canoe.
Good afternoon, distinguished members of the Board, Dr. Height. My name is Diane Canoe, and I've had the very distinct pleasure and privilege this year of serving as the Principal of Excel Academy Public Charter School, a not-for-profit K-8 academy. Today, I'm here to speak on behalf of my entire school community in our request to lease, as amended, the Matthew Henson Facility for the school year beginning 2012, 2013. Excel Academy is currently housed in a facility where the inadequacies in terms of the age of the building and space do not allow for a full range of program. It is a building and facility where our space is shared daily with the educational programs of the Parish of St. Bernard. Our current building, with the addition of eighth graders this year, has become nothing short of a shared cramped space where any and all spaces are utilized in a less-than-desirable climate for teaching and learning. Some of you who have visited our building know firsthand of what I speak. It is a building where our specialists work out of spaces the size of closets. And although it has been said that the only thing that's really needed for learning to take place is that a good teacher and a student be present, our current facility does not allow us to provide the quality of program services our students and teachers deserve and our parents, our most important partners, desire. And if I might add, if any of you should have any questions about the level of commitment of Excel staff, our current facility has no adult restroom facilities. How many of us would work in facilities where we wouldn't find that? More importantly, when our parents, our partners, come to our building and need to use the restroom, we must stop, think safety first, and make sure that there are no students in the restroom. Our current facility has continued to receive citations from the county, some of which I am told date back to as much as two years prior. Those repairs have yet to be corrected and just continue to simply be band-aided over by the archdiocese. Our current facility has little or no space for playground equipment. For our primary grade students and our intermediate PE classes in recess is held on the blacktop, which happens to be the parking lot of the parish. As all of our students arrive and depart daily by private transportation, as many as 300 vehicles come through a parking lot that is shared with the Mega Mart, whom the parish has given them the permission to use. The Mega Mart is a supermarket that is known to gross over $1 million a month. Can you imagine the traffic? But we make it happen at Excel, working hard to hone a system for dropping off and picking up our students that does not compromise the safety of our students. Excel Academy is currently paying close to $34,000 a month to lease our facility. $34,000 a month of all of our hard-earned tax dollars, as we are a Prince George's County Public Charter School, and that amount does not begin to include the many additional costs for maintenance and utilities for a building that is in such need of great repair. In closing, we respectfully request today that you continue to support us in our endeavor to procure the Matthew Henson Building, a building that will allow us to better provide an environment conducive for both teaching, learning, and the ability to deliver those services in a safe and orderly environment. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Canoe. Okay, colleagues, that concludes the public comment list for, for this item. Yield to Dr. Height.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As I indicated in the initial introduction of this item, we are seeking board approval for Item 9.01, for the Facility Use Agreement for Excel Academy Public Charter School at Matthew Henson Elementary School. The Excel Academy Public Charter School will begin the 2012, 2013 school year with grades K through 8. Excel is currently leasing from the Archdiocese of Washington in a facility that is, in our opinion, in disrepair and has considerable space constraints that will now, that will not accommodate the growth that Excel needs in order to expand to eighth grade. Excel believes that leasing Matthew Henson Elementary will prove beneficial to the school system and the students who they serve. And I just want to add that with 380 students, we think, we, as in the administration, thinks that it's really important to have adequate facilities that are not cost-prohibitive to an educational body that's educating 380 of our students. We have We have a building that has been sitting vacant since we made a decision to close multiple buildings three years ago, and that facility is Matthew Henson, and we feel that we could use that building to support their needs and at the same time be able to yield from a building that has not been in use approximately $289,000 a year for the cost of that lease. And so we see this as a win-win for all parties, and therefore are submitting this to the board for approval.
Thank you, Dr. Height, for that information, and I now yield to colleagues for deliberations. Mr. Burrows.
I just want to speak in support of this. It's important that we have every student in a safe environment that's conducive to learning, and this way, we also make some money. So I just want to speak in favor of this.
Thank you. Ms. Johnson.
Madam Chair, Mr. Burrows' statement about safety and also bringing in revenue clearly are important, and I do validate that, but I have wrestled with this. I have come to a resolution. I wish to thank Dr. Coleman Potter for helping me work through some questions that I had. I really do believe that from the onset, looking at the inception of the school and where the school was going to be located, was clearly a consideration for a long view for future growth of the school and the potential and possibility should have been seriously considered and thought about. At this late time, after children have grown accustomed and happy where they are, and now to determine, oh, well, this is just kind of, you know, these were things that I raised when the charter was first presented to the board about concern about the growth potential and the where. I know the school facility where they are. I actually went to church at St. Bernard's, so I knew teachers there, and so I knew that facility and its age and its limitations. However, here we are in 2012, children's safety is important, the growth of the school is important, and through the assistance of Dr. Coleman Potter in helping me through this contract and looking at those issues that gave me concern, I am prepared to accept this, but I do caution that as we look to move into Matthew Henson, that building is also not new. There are going to again be considerations, and I don't want us jumping from one to the other without the long view. The success of a school is not based upon sitting around the table and deciding, okay, today I'm going to start a school. It's more than that. It is far more than that, and therefore, I am about our children and the quality and security of the programs that they go into, not ideas of adults that have not had the long view. So with that, Madam Chair, I will be voting in favor of having the school to move to Matthew Henson because it is the right thing to do for children, but it also brings us up to speed with how much is going to be paid for the use of that building as opposed to the original ideas of the contract.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Ms. Waller.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would like to speak in support of the move of the Excel Academy to accepting the new contract. Certainly, I am familiar with the facilities that they're currently in. As an at-large board member, it was my pleasure to visit the school on several occasions and even later on to see the students in various productions, and I understand the concerns that the speakers spoke about, and I can attest to the traffic on Riverdale Road and that little cutaway that goes through there. I often wonder how our school buses make the left-hand turn to even get the students over to Excel Academy. I feel very strongly that the current board of the Excel Academy has grown. I feel that they face challenges, as we all do, in some processes, but they have grown, and I feel that they are looking for the future of these students. And certainly, this school is actively engaged in the community and with parent engagement. And so therefore, I support the acceptance of this contract, of the new contract, as amended and proposed by the administration. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Waller. Ms. Higgins.
Thank you. I just wanted to, I will also be voting in support of this motion and would congratulate the Excel Board and Ms. Canoe for taking the initiative to find an alternative site. I too have been at that school and have seen its conditions and appreciate the initiative that you've taken, and I'm sure it's going to be a much better place for the children.
Thank you. Ms. Beck.
Dr. Height, in 2009, when the board consolidated the schools as part of that plan, you directed staff to come up with a plan for the consolidated schools, and so we wouldn't be sitting with empty facilities in the middle of our communities. And so it, I think that we need a report on the schools that were closed and what we are doing with those schools now, because I know at that time, there was some concern that we were voting to shutter schools in thriving communities, and having Henson be vacant for this long of a period, if we did plan earlier, maybe Henson could have moved into that facility earlier, and it wouldn't have been empty. So the schools that are empty now, what came of that consolidation plan?
So if it pleases the board, I can provide you with that information now, I mean, just in general, and I can give more specific information later. When we originally closed, we had a set of priorities for how we would utilize those facilities. Many of the facilities, the first priority was really where we could expand specialty programs. We were going to try to use those buildings for that purpose, hence the Montessori-French immersion split that will be moving into one of the buildings now.
Schugard.
Schugard. And the other was to look at, and then other parts of that are whether or not we could attract other types of programs to those facilities. Most of the facilities, Henson is the only school remaining that is not dedicated. Most of the other facilities have become office space for the district as we discontinue and extinguish leases. So we've had lease, we were paying for lease property in many places in and around the county for staff, and now many of these facilities have become places where we are using, what we're using for office space. And then the final one, as I indicated, was Henson, and there was a, it was an original plan to make that a green tech training center, and the individuals who were attempting to do that could not pull off the funding associated with converting that school to a green tech training center, so therefore, that building remained vacant. And so that's why we're here today with having this conversation, and we feel like, as I indicated earlier, it becomes a win-win because we're able to put a program into the building and at the same time generate some revenue for the system.
Okay, thank you.
And I can provide a more specific set of results of each building, and there were eight facilities, and we have multiple programs in some, and some are community-based programs, some are programs to serve students with special needs, and they're all co-located with a lot of offices, and so I can provide that for you.
And I know that the school over on Central Avenue was not one of these that was closed.
Linden Hill.
Linden Hill.
Yep.
But that, I think that would be helpful, being as that really falls under the same umbrella as a closed school in a community.
Correct.
Thank you, Ms. Beck. All right, seeing no further comments from colleagues, entertain a motion if there is one.
I make a motion, we accept.
Thank you, Ms. Waller.
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Higgins. It's been properly moved and second to accept the recommendation of the superintendent on this item. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Ms. Jackson, call the roll, please.
On the motion, Mr. Armwood. Mrs. Beck.
Aye.
Ms. Boston.
Aye.
Mr. Burrows.
Aye.
Ms. Johnson.
Aye.
Ms. Waller.
Aye.
Ms. Higgins.
Aye.
Ms. Jacobs.
Aye.
Motion passed.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair and members of the board. That brings us to items under 10.0, Governance Unfinished Business. These are second reader items. The first is 10.1, a resolution, naming of the main concourse at Baden Elementary School, the Jerry Keeney Main Concourse.
Thank you. Okay, if I can get caught up here. Resolution. Thank you, Ms. Higgins. Okay, item 10.1. Ms. Beck, would you like to read the resolution into the record?
Thank you. It was moved by Mrs. Beck, seconded by Mrs. Johnson, that the Prince George's County Board of Education hereby agrees to name the main concourse at Baden Elementary School the Jerry Keeney Main Concourse. Whereas, Mr. Jerry Keeney began his employment with the Prince George's County Public School System on September 4th, 1956, and whereas, Mr. Keeney served, advised, guided, counseled, and dedicated himself to the community, faculty, staff, and students of Baden Elementary School for, from 1973 until his retirement on January 1st, 1976. During his tenure at Baden Elementary School, Mr. Keeney served as principal and interacted with understanding, care, and respect to students, parents, faculty, and staff, and whereas, Mr. Keeney worked with compassion and commitment for and with the students of Baden Elementary School and was entrusted with the construction oversight associated with the new Baden facility proposed by the Prince George's County Public School System, and whereas, Mr. Keeney showed a philosophy of sharing, listening, and compromising while guiding the new Baden Elementary School towards completion, and whereas, Mr. Keeney worked diligently to move forward the vision of a comprehensive community facility to include a school, library, and medical center, and whereas, Mr. Keeney's respect for the environment supported the creation of the William S. Schmidt Environmental Center, which would serve not only the students of Prince George's County, but welcome those from surrounding jurisdiction for decades. And whereas, Mr. Keeney worked collaboratively with his colleagues, both within the system as well as in the community, and supported their roles as leaders of the school and community, and whereas, through his service to the students of Baden Elementary School, Mr. Keeney left a legacy of devotion to students that aligns with the core belief of the Prince George's County Public Schools. Therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Education believes in acknowledging and codifying recognition to individuals whose dedication and work in the school and community have left a legacy for generations of Prince George's County residents, and therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Education of Prince George's County strongly supports the will of the community, as supported by endorsement of the past and current staff and community residents of Baden, to name the main concourse after Mr. Jerry Keeney, and believes that this action will motivate and inspire students, and therefore, be it further resolved that the Prince George, that the Board of Education further believes the naming of the Baden Elementary School Main Concourse after Mr. Jerry Keeney will honor the admirable service of our colleague and provide a lasting acknowledgement of this exceptional work. Now, therefore, be it finally resolved that the Board of Education of Prince George's County hereby directs that the main concourse will hereafter be known as the Jerry Keeney Main Concourse.
Thank you, Ms. Beck. Ms. Johnson.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded that the board approves item 10.1, which is naming of the main concourse of Baden Elementary School to Jerry Keeney Main Concourse. Call the roll.
Ms. Armwood.
Aye.
Ms. Beck.
Aye.
Ms. Boston. Mr. Burrows.
Aye.
Ms. Johnson.
Yes, aye.
Ms. Waller.
Aye.
Ms. Jackson.
Aye.
Ms. Higgins.
Aye.
Ms. Jacobs.
Aye.
Motion passed.
Is the family here?
No, Mr. Keeney's widow will be flying up from Florida, so as soon as the vote was taken, she'll be notified.
Thank you. All right, that brings us to the next item, which is naming of Charles Herbert Flower High School Auditorium, Helena Jones Nobles, Helena Nobles Jones Auditorium. Ms. Yield to Ms. Johnson.
Madam Chair, I do have a question. It probably is better to be asked of Dr. Coleman Potter. When this passes, I'd like to know, has there been a cost done estimate for the addition of the name to the school? Is it going to be on the exterior where the word auditorium appears, or is it going to be a plaque noted in the entry hallway? What are the costs that are going to be attendant to this, and who's going to bear that cost?
Ms. Johnson, we would naturally bear the cost of that, and the cost is about $100 per letter in order to do that. Now, the naming would be on the inside of the facility, not the outside.
Excuse me, I'm not clear about this. You indicated how much per letter?
$100 per letter.
And where would the lettering be? Is it painted? Is it metal? I'm asking, the word auditorium appears on the exterior of the building, are we adding the lettering to the exterior?
Ms. Johnson, so the 12-inch letters that I'm referring to are the exterior letters.
And they would be...
And so we'd have to determine whether or not they are, if we name it and put those, and put that name on the outside, then it would be approximately $100 per letter.
And all of this name would be, each of the letters of the name at $100 per letter?
That's correct.
And then the cost of putting it there?
That's included in the, that's included in the $100 per letter.
Hundred dollars per letter. And so, and the total, I mean, if we could do a, you know, fast piece of multiplication. So we're talking about how much money, and PGCPS is going to bear the cost of that?
Six plus five is 11.
$1,800, Ms. Johnson.
Eighteen, for the, for the sign.
Yes, because auditorium is already there.
Right, I got that part. So $1,800 for the signage of name.
Correct.
And that includes the work itself.
Correct.
All right, thank you.
Maybe 1,900 just for the asterix, I mean, the hyphen.
I heard that fudge, Dr. Height. Look, I'm looking for specifics.
Okay, I hate to be, how about the THE? So is it another 300? Are we going to put the, Helena Nobles Jones? Well, they already did the hyphen, Ms. Johnson. Okay, so the resolution.
I apologize. Just like we do the Gerald Borman Auditorium at Eleanor Roosevelt High School, we don't have the in front of Gerald Borman.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
No, right, I didn't get one. Let me get them up. Ms. Armwood. Are you giving me a motion, sir?
And I'm responding to Ms. Johnson's question, which is very relevant. I had a discussion with the PTA several times, who expressed a willingness to pay for part of that, of that signage, so we need to contact the PTA and see what they can provide because they expressed a very definite willingness to pay for the signage.
Ms. Boston.
I make a motion that we accept.
resolution 10.2. Second.
Did you want to read it?
Okay.
Thank you, is there a second?
Thank you. It's been properly moved and second that we accept the recommendation for naming the auditorium at Charles Herbert Flowers High School, the Helena Noble Jones Auditorium. Resolution to be read. Did I say it wrong again? Without the T H E. Resolution to be read in the record by Ms. Faith Jackson.
It was moved by Mr. Armwood, seconded by Ms. Carolyn Boston, that whereas, Mrs. Helena Nobles Jones began her employment with the Prince George's County Public School System on July 1st, 2000, as principal of Charles Herbert Flowers High School. And whereas, Mrs. Helena Nobles Jones' commitment to excellence in education has merited and honored the legacy of distinction exemplified by the life of Charles Herbert Flowers. And whereas, during her tenure at Charles Herbert Flowers High School, Mrs. Helena Nobles Jones challenged students to build a mecca of excellence and created an atmosphere that sanctioned students to share their talents in a myriad of activities, including sports, clubs, and community service. And whereas, during the past 10 years, Mrs. Helena Nobles Jones has led Charles Herbert Flowers High School in creating and development, developing the school's signature academic programs, while cheering on the successes of the students and grieving them, with them in their times of sorrow. And whereas, Mrs. Helena Nobles Jones has for 45 years served as a distinguished educator in the communities of Washington DC and Baltimore, Maryland, as teacher, dean of girls, assistant principal, principal and assistant superintendent of middle and junior high schools, and retired from Prince George's County Public Schools, renowned for educational leadership as principal of Charles Herbert Flowers High School. And therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Education of Prince George's County strongly supports the will of the community of Charles Herbert Flowers High School, the Charles Herbert Flowers High School PTSA, and the Alumni Association of Charles Herbert Flowers High School, to name the Charles Herbert Flowers High School Auditorium after Mrs. Helena Nobles Jones, and believes that this action will memorize the legacy of her leadership, encouragement of youth to excel, and compassionate nature, and that the presence of her name will carry on this golden gulf of students, the spirits of students for years to come. And therefore, be it further resolved that the Board of Education further believes that the naming of the Charles Herbert Flowers High School Auditorium after Mrs. Helena Nobles Jones will honor the admirable service of our colleague and provide a lasting acknowledgement of exceptional work. And now, therefore, be it finally resolved that the Board of Education of Prince George's County hereby directs that the auditorium at Charles Herbert Flowers High School will here and after be known as the Helena Nobles Jones Auditorium.
Thank you. All in favor? Any objections? Abstentions, seeing none, motion pass. Thank you. Dr. Height, yield to you. Unless you don't want me to.
Okay. I can help you out, if you want. We're at the end of the agenda. Looks like Mr. Seaman is here.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And so, do we want to move to the discussion item, or just continue through the, completing the agenda? We have new business.
We're going to do new business first.
Okay, great. So, items under 11.1, new business, these are first reader items. There are two items. Resolution naming the media center at Rosaryville Elementary School, the Regina C. Williams Media Center. And item 11.2, board policy, 1,600, community relations, constituent services.
Thank you, Dr. Height. Colleagues, this requires no discussion. I'll entertain a motion to accept. Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Thank you, Ms. Beck. It's been properly moved and second that we accept these two items as first readers. All in favor? Any objections or abstentions? Seeing none, motion pass. Dr. Height?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, that brings us to item 6.0, discussion item. 6.1, Transforming Neighborhoods Initiative. This is a briefing, and our discussion topic for this evening will include a review of the community, of the county executives' Transforming Neighborhoods Initiative, and will be presented by Mr. Bradford Seaman, Chief Administrative Officer for Prince George's County. So, at this time, I will both welcome and yield to Mr. Bradford Seaman.
Okay, you can hear me now. Thank you very much, Dr. Height, and to the board members. I'm happy to be here this afternoon to share with you a lot of information, and hopefully not that long a time. This is the county executives' Transforming Neighborhoods Initiative, that we have cooperation from Dr. Height and his team. We're excited about it, I think they are too, and I'm here to hope, hopefully make you excited about it today. First thing I'll point out here on this slide, and we'll take about five or six slides to actually get to the initiative, but I'll move through them quickly, is when the county executive drafted this year's budget, along with the senior team, we were really focused on three things, and that was having a vision, having focus, and then achieving measurable results. Next slide, please. And, here we go. Thank you, okay. And when we went through our strategic planning initiative last fall, we developed this vision statement, and I won't read it word for word, but you will notice that it talks about being a national leader in the Washington metropolitan area, because our, because of our thriving economy, great schools, safe neighborhoods, and high-quality health care, and then using policies and practices that are innovative. So, you see four things that are there as a major focus of the county executive's vision, the economy, the schools, neighborhoods, and high-quality health care. In addition to that, we identified effective human services, a safe and clean environment, and high-performance government operations as what we wanted to achieve here in the county. That last sentence is very important, too, and that is that we wanted to make Prince George's County one of the best places to live, invest, work, and visit. We developed a mission statement that we would use to carry us towards that, that vision, and again, not word for word, but the first thing there really talks about providing excellent services that achieve high levels of customer satisfaction, and then we talk about integrity, accountability, and convenience. We developed 13 principles that we wanted to use to interact with each other, within the county government, with other, other members of the, outside the executive branch, like the board, the sheriff, and the state's attorney. And these are the 13 principles. Again, I won't go through them word for word, but I think, again, it starts with customer service excellence, of course, ethics and trust, communication, teamwork, and collaboration are very, very important, and really is the, the foundation for this program, understanding that we really, really will achieve more together, working together than working in silos. Of course, we want to be accountable and execute, and then we have energizing and visionary leadership, like you have from Dr. Height, we have from the county executive. We want to be technology-driven and innovative. I'll show, I'll go to a map in a few minutes that will show you just about the innovation using technology, and then also measurable results, evidence-based decisions, and then also having a sense of urgency. The, I mentioned these seven county-wide priorities already to you, so I will not go through them again, one by one, but I will say this, that one of the things that, that we have realized as we've been here in the government, is that things are interrelated, and education is impacted by the economy, the safety of neighborhoods, the health care in the neighborhoods, human services. I was at an event with Dr. Height a number of months ago, and one of the things that he mentioned is that we need to stop having the teachers have to do social services within the schools, because they're there to teach. So, all these things are interrelated. This map that you have here is really the foundation of the initiative, and let me explain a little bit of it to you. I know it's kind of busy, but I think I can, I can straighten it out for you. The first thing is that some of the county's major assets, not all of them, are listed there as symbols. You'll see the large blue circles are our metro stations, the little yellow triangles are our schools, and you see they go all throughout the county. There are some smaller, the, the, the big red squares are large employers, and then we also have our hospitals that are marked there, that you probably can't see the H's on those. The area that's colored is the area inside the Beltway and bordering the District of Columbia. What the colors mean is that we looked at, and I'll come back to the map, we looked at these indicators. And where we started really was, if you recall, in January of 2011, after the county executive took over, we had a spike in violent crime. We had 12 or 13 homicides in 12 or 13 days. At that point, he talked to the police chief and said, you know, we really need to do something. So, the police, amongst other things, came up with a summer crime initiative. And during that summer crime initiative, they focused on five areas within the county, and those five areas were Langley Park, Bladensburg, East Riverdale, Hillcrest Heights, Glass Manor, Oxon Hill, and Sutland. And in those five areas, and through their initiative, what, what they were able to do was reduce violent crime in those areas by over 20% in three of the areas, and over 10% in two of the areas. And so, when we looked at the success of that program, we decided that the strategy that they used is one that we could use to lift the county overall. And the strategy was really understanding from a crime perspective, that, you know, there's a suspect, there's a victim, and there's a location. And by the time you have a crime, something has gone wrong, either with the suspect, the victim, or in the particular location. So, and the location could be, there could be social service issues, domestic violence, educational levels, of course, affect crime as well, and a number of these other areas. Now, not that these were the most important things, but they were the information that we could get our hands on by what's called a census designated place, so that we can then map it on the GIS map. So, we looked at violent crime, property crime, third and fifth grade reading and math scores, school absentee rates, foreclosure rates, concentrations of Section 8 housing, income levels, and pedestrian deaths and injuries. Now, I want to back up to concentration, Section 8 housing for a minute, because I don't want that to be misunderstood. Section 8 housing is not a bad thing, but concentrations, too much of anything in one area can create a challenge, and in areas where we have high concentrations of Section 8 housing, we also seem to have a number of other issues. So, let me back up here to the map. So, back to the map. What we did was we computed an average across those nine areas that I just showed you in the county. When an area deviated significantly in a negative way from the average in the county, we turned it red. The next worst was orange, then green, and then, I'm sorry, then yellow, then green. It's hard for you to see it. You can see it down in this area right here, there are blue stripes. The six blue striped areas that are here are the areas that the police department suggested to us that we needed to focus on. They were the five areas from last summer, plus a sixth area, which they added, the Kentland Palmer Park area. So, we took that, but then we also looked at the other data that I just showed you and said, well, why don't we marry the two and see what we get? So, what we got was, and it's no coincidence, that three of the six areas that they picked were red, one of them was orange, and in here in the north, you had Langley Park, which is green on this map, and then we had East Riverdale Bladensburg, which is yellow on the map. Now, one note about the green and the yellow there. The Langley Park area and the East Riverdale Bladensburg area are two highest concentrations of immigrant population. So, we believe that there are not a lot of people there that qualify, let's say, for Section 8 housing. They don't call for service because some, the way some of the laws are right now, and so we really don't believe that these two areas are green and yellow. I don't know what they are, but I don't think that they're green and yellow. So, we felt fine picking the six areas that the police department suggested. So, what are we doing in those six areas? Again, these are the, the indicators that we use to, to deal with the colors. And these are the actual six areas. And what we did was we took, we have four deputy chief administrative officers in the executive branch and two assistants. So, lucky we had six, we had six areas, and so we took a DCAO and an assistant DCAO, and we assigned them as a team leader in each one of these six areas. What we then did was we formed cross-governmental teams, both inside the executive branch and outside of the executive branch, which includes the schools, and we, so there are 16 or 17 people on each of these six teams. So, we're talking about representative from police department, fire department, homeland security, the sheriff's department, social services, family services, health department, our information technology people, public works in transportation, DER, which is our environmental resources. And so, it cuts across the, the entire county government and outside. We also have someone from park and planning on each team, and somebody from our Economic Development Corporation. These are the members from the school system that Dr. Height has given us that are assigned to each of the six teams, okay? Now, what we are doing is we, we went out, we had community meetings was the first step, because we wanted to make sure that we did not go into the community telling the community what their issues were, but rather asking the community what they felt their issues were. And so, what we are doing really is putting together a matrix here that shows across the bottom, the high, what's identified as a high community need. On the left over here, we made an inventory of all the services that the county government can deliver now. So, it's not what we can do if we get some more money, or what we can do tomorrow, it's services that we can deliver now. You know, we can replace streetlights now, we can fill potholes now, we can write code violations now, we can work with gangs and youth now, because we have a youth strategies program. So, we have a whole inventory of these services. And what we're doing is looking at the intersection between the high community need, and then what we can deliver now, and that, that's our number one priority. We do these things now. So, we have gone into the neighborhoods, each team has gone through, done a bus ride, they've identified, and then the department, the department members in coordinating with people in their department have gone in, they've identified actual addresses where we can deliver these services now. And we are, so we're in the process of completing neighborhood action plan. Each neighborhood has their own action plan, and then we will do a deployment plan for how we'll deploy those services. And what we will focus on, again, it's a number one priority, high ability to deliver, high community need, and then this area here, we'll, we'll concentrate on second, a moderate need, a moderate capacity to deliver. And then we have this priority three, which is troublesome. It's a high need in the community, but a low ability for the county to deliver. That's where we have to reach out to partners, the faith-based community, nonprofits, businesses. One of the reasons we have our Economic Development Corporation involved is so they can reach out to the business community. I went and spoke to a group of business, businesses the other day. We got 4,000 applications for our summer youth employment program. We have 250 jobs. Okay, so we went out to the business community and, and talked to them about helping us by hiring some of the youth into summer internships that they might have, to keep them busy, keep them off the street, that will help with this program, both within these six targeted areas, and then throughout the county. So, we, we are, this is not an area that we are focusing on immediately, because it would take us too long to deliver there, and if we don't deliver, the communities will say it's business as usual, and, and so we're looking for the things that we can deliver immediately. And then we have two other circles here, and they're both red. One is a low need and a low capacity, so of course, we're not going to do that. We're not, we don't, we don't, we're not good at doing it, and it's not needed, so we forget about it. And I, we put this minus one up here, because this is one where there's a high capacity to deliver, but a low need. And what needs to happen there, assuming it really is low need, we need to shift those resources into this area over time. But again, to deal with that area, we really are going to need outside help. And so, this again, becomes the hotspot for us, the focus, where we are going to deploy our resources immediately in order to achieve some short-term goals and successes, and really galvanize the, the, the community involvement. As we move towards the end here, how can you participate in a transforming neighborhoods initiative? Well, there are a number of ways. We've got, nice animation, okay. We've got these things listed here, but there, there are a number of things that we can do. The first thing is, is to tell people about it, so that they know what it is that we're trying to do. Even within the county government, we're making sure that all the employees know Even within the county government, we're making sure that all the employees know because we have employees that live in these areas. And although they might not be involved on the teams, they can actually support, talk to their neighbors, get input from the neighbors, and give us feedback. But we are, the teams are meeting within the focus area at least every two weeks. Most of them have opted to meet there weekly. So you can actually attend one of the focus group meetings. We also, I think that most of the community meetings have happened already. There may be a few others. We are building a transforming neighborhoods initiative website that should be available within the next two weeks. But if you need information in the interim, we can get that. I think Karen Lynch may already have information on that. And if not, we can certainly send it to you electronically. It lists all the team members, the neighborhoods, who the team leaders are. And then that talks about the third bullet here, reviewing the information that will be on the county's website ultimately in a few weeks. And then discuss the initiative with the school system's contacts. As we wrap up here, you, these again are the seven focus areas, focus priorities that the county executives set forth, just kind of said in different words. Expand our economy is like thriving economy all the way through, having innovative and results-oriented policies, which again is high-performance government. But you're probably asking yourself the question, well, what about the rest of the county? And that's a good question. But this is what we expect to happen. By focusing on those six areas, having these cross governmental teams, they will learn from each other. They'll learn better ways to deliver services. Hopefully, the school board representatives will learn about things, the programs that we have in the county that may be able to help the students. The example that I always give is that our police department are the best in the business at taking resources and focusing them into targeted areas without incurring overtime. So for example, we have a code enforcement group in our Department of Environmental Resources that goes out and inspects businesses where there's high grass and things like that, warns people, writes code violations to deal with the blight that are in the neighborhoods. Well, oftentimes, they need to deploy additional resources. They'll need to do this in the six areas. Well, by being on the teams with the police department, they'll learn how the police department does it. They will change the way that they deploy very likely. And then that will not only be done in these six neighborhoods, but will implement it throughout the county government, I mean, throughout the county so that the processes that we're using to fill potholes, do streetlights, job fairs, or what have you, will improve all throughout the county from what we learn in these six focus areas. So that's it. That's our initiative. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to address them.
Mr. Armwood?
I want to thank you very much for the initiative and for the executive baker's, you know, movement to help our schools and our communities. My question's number one. Can we improve the communication of the meetings, particularly to board members? Because while the initial phases do not target school functions per se, board members or members of the administration need to be present to answer the concerns which always come up from the community about the schools and the impact the schools are having on the community. That's the first thing I would ask. Please let us know when you're having the neighborhood meetings so that we can attend. I found out about the meeting at Drew Freeman an hour and a half before, only because a principal called me to let me know that that was occurring. One thing I would like to ask is, have you considered hiring students from within the target areas to do the repairs and the maintenance, the minor work that needs to be done? Because our students need employment, they need training and experience, and this is one way you can do that and not direct them into the larger youth employment program where that initiative can get watered down. Target the neighborhood. You've got, for instance, Drew Freeman in Sutland. You're doing cleanup in Sutland. Recruit students even as volunteers or as, better yet, paid volunteers to do that cleanup because that is bringing that impact to that community directly. And what do you expect the schools to do? What do we need to do to support your initiative? Because we're still not clear, while we're high on your list of priorities, what your plans are for the schools.
Sure. Well, first of all, your point's well taken about the community meetings and getting the notifications on that out to the board. I'll talk to the team leaders about that. I do believe that the representatives from the schools that were assigned by Dr. Height were present at many of the meetings, but I know the board would like to have a presence as well. I think your idea about recruiting students from within the target neighborhoods is a great idea. It's one of, I have not heard that strategy specifically mentioned, so I'll certainly pass that on as well. With respect to what it is that we want from the schools, one of the things that we did, as I mentioned, is we asked each of the departments that are involved, including the system, to give us a list of the services and programs that they could deliver immediately. And so as we are in the neighborhoods, talking to the community, finding out what the community needs are, and we're, as I showed in the chart, we see that intersection of high community need. We're then looking at the inventory of services that the various departments can deliver and talking about what can be done, what, for example, schools can do that will address those community needs. And then we're taking those services and we're putting them onto a deployment schedule. And we are preparing a deployment schedule now. The action plans along with the schedule are due by the end of this month. And so when those plans are completed, that's when everybody will have their marching orders about what it is that we need done and when in tier one of the program.
Thank you, Mr. Armwood. Ms. Waller?
Thank you, Mr. Seaman. It's good to have you with us this afternoon. Certainly, I am support of a community initiative that enhances our communities and also that provides support and us as a school board in providing tools for the academic success of all students in our school system. However, I would like to express my disappointment with the lack of communication from our administration and from the county administration in the communication regarding this program. I represent school board district three, and one of the main districts that you've outlined in this proposal is Langley Park. I have a total of nine schools that feed in and the community resides in this area. I have, I have one high school, but the persons attending a second high school reside in this area. And that concerns me in that, in my, along with my role as being a board member, I represent a civic association as president of representing over twelve hundred households. I'm involved with other civic associations, highly involved with police district one, and just about all of the county departments that provide services to our communities. And all I've read about is statements in the paper. I'm a foot soldier that's out there in this community. On yesterday, we celebrated the grand opening of the Mary Center in Adelphi, Maryland. That is going to be an excellent resource to the entire county and the northwestern side of the county in particular. And I guess I'll go to my question because I drive through this community. I see the lights out. I see the grass grown up. And I know how, as a civic person, we're calling DER, Public Works. We're working with WSSC. And I think about our young people and the perceived or perception of gang involvement that we have in the Langley Park area. I don't believe in looking at the chart that we do have a large number of Section Eight residents in that area. However, we have a large number of apartment complexes and homes in which we have multifamilies residing, and they are constantly moving, which impacts what's going on in our schools. I've also recently found out some, one of our complexes is getting ready to turn over and go from one type of a complex to a different type of complex, and I'm concerned about that. I don't even know if you are aware of it yet or not. So one of my questions is, since Dr. Height has been working with you all, what do you see as my role as a board member with nine schools in the Langley Park district, being that I don't have any information, I haven't been invited to any meetings, I am a civic association president, there are other meetings and things that we attend, and I don't know anything? Also, oh, someone's saying, man. Also, on your priority, number one, what is your timeframe? What is the timeframe for that? And you mentioned something that I'm not familiar with, the youth strategist program. What is that? I'm not familiar with it. I'm interested, what role is the county council playing in this program? And those are just some of my questions that I have. I look forward to working with you. I look forward to my continued working relationship with Dr. Height and the administration, but there's been a total breakdown in communications in regards to this program. This Board of Education, we look on our role as being leaders. We cannot lead if we don't have the proper information.
Okay, I appreciate your concern and the questions that you've asked. With respect to communication, well, one of the first steps that we're taking to try to deal with the communication issue, and we have gotten comments at the county executive's office that are, you know, similar to what you've talked about. I mean, I sat in a meeting yesterday with the Apartment Owners Association, and one of the people that was there was a county resident, and they said that they weren't familiar with the program. So I was in that particular meeting to brief that association about the program to bridge the gap that, you know, you just talked about. I'm here today to bridge the gap as well. So we admittedly, the communication could have been better. This initiative is a county executive level initiative. All of the other agencies, both inside the government and outside, have been very supportive. It's our responsibility over in the county administration to communicate the message, and that's why I'm here today. We are, as I said, working on a website. We have sent out a press release regarding this, right? We had a news conference down at one of the high schools in the Glass Manor, Oxon Hill area that was covered by all four networks. And there's been a newspaper article as well. However, those are things, as I told the person yesterday, that's not us reaching out, that's basically us hoping that we get covered. So we do have to do better with the reach out, and that's why I'm here today. With respect to your role as a board member, of course, we appreciate your support. I think that as the communication gets better and you are involved either in the community meetings or at the team meetings, you will see exactly what it is that you can do. Mr. Armwood, next to you, kind of demonstrated what you can do best, and that is give us ideas because we, we're not proclaiming to know everything to do here. That's one of the reasons why we made it a cross governmental initiative, so we could bring all of the minds together to come up with various different ideas. So certainly, your ideas and allowing us to use the knowledge that you have of your community, because you are correct, in Langley Park where you represent, there are a number of apartment buildings there. Many of them are not Section Eight, but they're going to have similar challenges because there are so many apartment buildings there. And your connections with the civic association would be very important. We could certainly use that as well as we reach out. You're also going to know, as you said, about issues and key people in the community that we should reach out to and make sure that they're involved. So getting that information from you would be great. One thing that we do have that is already functional is, that will be part of the website, is a web application where you can actually go in, choose a particular area, and then submit a suggestion or concern. And if you like, you can include your contact information so we can get back in contact with you, so I can make sure that you get that immediately. With respect to the youth strategies program, youth strategies program is a program that's funded by a grant that is, it's in our Department of Family Services, it had been our Department of Family Services, but we've moved it over into public safety now. And the director of that program reports to Barry Stanton, who is our DCAO for public safety. So they coordinate with the police department, and they actually go out, they do a lot of work in Sutland and some of the other areas, the focus areas. And they go out, they talk to the youth, they deal with issues, find out what's on the youth's mind. And they've been doing that for a couple of years now. So, and I can get you more information. Michael Butler is actually the director of that program. He's a former police officer. And I, and you asked what the county council's role is. Well, we briefed the county council the way that we're briefing you here today. They had similar commitments to want to get involved in their particular area. They've been invited to participate in the community meetings. And again, they are sharing with us what their knowledge in their community and the issues in the community and helping us promote the program within the community, giving us key community contacts. And I think one of the things that we can all do that will help here is to work together on this, that we are trying to make this a collaborative effort, working together. We will improve on our part to reach out with respect to communication, but we're also very hopeful that everybody will kind of row in the same direction with this initiative because the more momentum, the more people that we have working on it and aware of it, the better ideas we'll get and the better execution we'll get as well.
Thank you. Mr. Burrows?
Thank you for your presentation. As I look at your key indicators in the targeted areas, each one of these areas is something that is important for the county to really unite behind to address. So I think your key indicators are absolutely on point. I did have a question. You mentioned that you have an action plan and a delivery plan. Can we get copies of your action plans and delivery plans? I represent Oxon Hill and some of Hillcrest Heights, which is one of your areas. And so it would be helpful to me if I'm going to provide you suggestions on how to, you know, make this better or connect you with different community leaders. It would definitely be helpful just to see what you already have and where you're trying to go and how you plan to execute that. And also with the Department of Youth Strategies and Michael Butler, I have been in contact with Michael Butler, so he has reached out to me, and we're definitely going to sit down to figure out what we can do with youth.
Sure. We appreciate your support regarding neighborhood action plans. They're in preparation right now. So the, again, the teams have reached out to the community. They've gone on bus tours through the community. And then the departments represented on the team have gone out to identify addresses and places where we can deliver these immediate services. And now we're looking again at that intersection between what the community says they need, what we know, particularly the police department, because they know the communities, not just from a crime fighting perspective, but because they're out there, they know the community. So we're looking at the intersection between that high need, high ability to deliver. And by the end of the month, we'll produce the and by the end of the month, we'll produce the plans and we'll, we'll make summaries available.
Thank you.
Ms. Johnson?
Good afternoon. Um, I think I would like to begin by saying, this initiative is forty years late. I've been here. I, I, and that is not disingenuous, nor is it disrespectful. I'd like to begin by saying, during the Johnson administration's Great Society, as a young college student, there was much work of this order that was done in Prince George's, and I was one, like my colleague, a foot soldier. And it fell off. Sustainability is absolutely imperative. Having worked with communities, doing a host of bazillions of kinds of things, I'd like to begin by asking you, why is the word seniors, as in senior citizens, is not prominent here? They know their communities over longevity. They know it. They know it from the forties, the fifties, the sixties. They are vitally important in telling the story about the what was and why we're now. They have to be included, just like young people, as my col- let's hire them, but our senior citizens need it. The other item that I wish to recommend to you is that there is nothing on there that talks about communication as in bringing broadband as a part of this initiative. How do we link our communities together? If you live in certain parts of Acakeek, you cannot get broadband access. That's ridiculous. There are certain places, um, in Prince George's, just a little outside of Hyattsville, as you go into the central ca- they don't have it either. So, these are things that need to happen to be able for people to communicate. Um, and I'm going back to stuff, starting with the Johnson administration, how we talked about these kinds of things. Um, another, you have improved schools. How do you plan to do that? That needs to have real discussion. Is that your role? How do you interface with the school system, the school board on improving schools? What needs to be improved from your perspective? So, while you can't answer that standing at the podium today, I do believe this board and this superintendent and this school system needs to know, what do you mean by improve the schools? What needs to be improved, and how do you plan to get that done? Next item, um, you said early on that you just talked about realize that they are all interrelated. Why are you so late coming to that understanding? We know that. They are all interrelated. Next, on slide six, quality of healthcare. I would suggest to you, it should be quality of healthcare delivery system. We have quality healthcare depending upon where you live. It's just that it's not broad and the delivery of it. So, I would suggest that you might want to change that within the context of this initiative. Um, assets and liabilities, you didn't list what the liabilities were. Not listing them doesn't mean that they're not there. Um, key indicators, uh, of wh- of what? I mean, I know you had some listed, um, but there also needs to be the how. You're going to deal with them, and the other is, ch-ch-ch-ch, trying to think, I would suggest that on slide six also, rather than about clean en- environment, it should be sustainable, clean environment, because we have, you know, ebbs and flows, uh, you know, we'll have, uh, beautiful Prince George's, and then we'll have all that, and then that goes out the window. But we have real issues like being able to build batching plants in the middle of a community, or being able to put in dumping zones on the edges of certain communities because we don't value them. That's an environmental issue. So, what sounds like bashing, it isn't. I am trying to say to you, the work is large. It needs to be sustained because it is vitally important, and I am with you. I am in support of, I've been talking about this. I also work with Howard County. This is already in place and has been in place forever. We need this here. Our citizens deserve it. And so, I ask you, like my colleagues, please help yourselves, help us, and reach out, because we, many of us have been doing this kind of work for years. So, I thank you for coming, and hopefully, some of this has been helpful for you.
Thank you. It was helpful. Don't feel bashed. Uh, I don't, I, you know, the input is what we're looking for. You mentioned a number of things. Uh, I can touch on, on a few of them, uh, for time's sake. Uh, one, with respect to, you talked about the assets, liabilities, not listing the liabilities and the key indicators. We really are, um, in this exercise of coloring that map, the key indicators and the liabilities were really synonymous. So, we were looking at the things that are challenges in the community, and we listed those, the violent crime, property crime, foreclosure rates, and what have you. So, those nine items, and I, I refer to them as key indicators, but they were also what we looked at as, uh, as liabilities, but given the fact that that's not the most positive of words, we, um, we, we refer to them as key indicators. With respect to healthcare, I, I think you know that we are, um, in July twenty-second of last year, we signed a memorandum of understanding with the University of Maryland Medical System for a new regional medical center. However, there was a deep discussion during that process about the healthcare delivery system in Prince George's County. We have, uh, reached out to the University of Maryland School of Public Health. They are finishing up a public health impact study now, and, um, we're reviewing the draft of that, and it has indicated a number of different things and makes some recommendations about how to improve our access to healthcare. Um, you know, one of the things that we saw, uh, from that study is that Prince George's County has one half of a primary care physician for every one thousand people. Montgomery County, on the other hand, has one primary care physician for every one thousand people, so they have about nine hundred and twenty. Uh, we have about four hundred and sixty-five. The area, uh, just south of Suitland and a little below that, um, is where you have a desert. Uh, you go down into Acakeek, you have a similar situation. So, we are aware of it. We are actively working to bring additional federally qualified health centers to Prince George's County. I was involved with, uh, Maria Gomez at Mary Center in helping to get that location up there, Cool Springs Elementary. I couldn't make the ceremony yesterday, but I was, I actually spoke at the, um, the groundbreaking ceremony, so I know Maria well. Um, and so, your point's well taken about the healthcare, and we, we really do understand that the, the delivery system is important, because one of the reasons why dimensions, our current system, is not financially viable right now, is because too many people go to the emergency room instead of a primary care physician. So, we, we, it's a challenge, and we are actively working that more than I could ever express to you right now. I didn't mean to sound like we're just realizing that these things are all interrelated. That's what I said, but that's not what I meant. Certainly, they're all interrelated, and that sort of gets to, you, you know, it, the, about improving schools, um, what the county executive wants to do is collaborate with Dr. Height in a way that has not, and the board, in a way that has not been done in the past, to, uh, lend our resources. There are programs that, um, we're currently working on to help bring additional resources, um, through private businesses and what have you into, uh, to be able to do things in the school system. So, what we're trying to do is collaborate, find out where it is that we can help and, and bring resources in. The, you know, the primary job of the schools, the board, and the superintendent, uh, and his team, and just like, you know, he is supporting us on this initiative, then we are supportive and following the lead of, of this, the board and the system with respect to where the challenges are and where we can, uh, help in bringing additional resources. As I mentioned, uh, understanding that, uh, family preservation, you know, social services, uh, is key to making sure that when the students get to you, that they're prepared to learn, and when they go home in the evening, there's an environment there. So, you know, we're doing home visits, we have a number of programs within family services and social services that I'm sure could be delivered better, but they will be delivered better through this initiative, because we will, because the people will sit on the same team, find out holes, things that aren't being done, and a lot of the strategies and things that you were looking for will actually come from the work of the teams actually working in the community. You mentioned senior citizens. It's not, senior citizens are not mentioned anywhere here, but I can tell you, we had a senior staff meeting the other day, and two of the, the team leaders talked about how, at their community meetings, the senior citizens were very involved, and at one particular community meeting, someone who wasn't a senior citizen, um, expressed concern about not having activities for the seniors, and what we were able to tell them was about some of the programs, you know, they have a program over on Allentown Road at our headquarters of Family Services, where they have teas for the senior citizens, they dele- deliver meals. So, again, these services need to be expanded. They're not well-known enough across, uh, the, the county government, across the county, but I, we think that through the, the, this initiative, that, that will improve. Uh, broadband, you know, we're currently working on, uh, the inter-county broadband network. I think you probably know about that. A lot of that's going into the schools. We already have INET. We do have a member of our Office of Information Technology on each of the teams to deal with these particular issues, and I get just as frustrated as you do when I drive through certain areas of the county, and, you know, you can't get reception. Uh, you know, even more important than that is what's happening in the homes, so that students have access in, both in the libraries and at home, uh, to the internet as a resource. So, you know, we, we're, the ICBN will take care of some of that, but we are, and, and we're also holding, um, the providers, Comcast, Verizon, accountable during our negotiations with them, uh, for expanding services, uh, in certain areas, and some of that, those negotiations are currently happening, because some of the franchise agreements are, uh, are up for, for renegotiation. So, I think I touched on most of what you said. Again, we, we appreciate your feedback and certainly realize that, um, that we need to reach out to you and, and be able to draw on the, the knowledge that you have about, you know, what has happened and, and what we can do in the future.
Thank you. Ms. Higgins?
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Seaman, I want to thank you, uh, for all your hard work and the work of your colleagues and the co- county executive's vision in terms of making a difference in our county for our, um, for our residents and our, our youth. Having said that, and I think you are already feeling, um, the energy from the, um, Board of Education in regards to, um, how valuable and how important this initiative is. Having said that, uh, with all due respect, um, your comments and the actions prior to today really don't show a recognition of the Board of Education's role, uh, as decision-makers and policymakers, in addition to, as my colleague, Ms. Waller, said, we know our communities, we have our schools, um, we're actively involved in that, and to, um, a- and again, I say this very respectfully, to be said, well, we can go on the website and put our names in, and then we'll get information, really doesn't reflect, um, the importance in the, the goal that you have about communication, teamwork, collaboration, that we, um, the county exec's office and the Board of Education, um, have an ongoing partnership on this very, very initiative. It's not going to work if the schools are involved, and this doesn't take away in any b- any way the important work of, of Dr. Height and his staff and the administration, but if we're going to make this work and work well, and I think everybody here is saying they want it to work and work well and support the initiative, it really has to, um, the, the Board of Education near, needs to be viewed as an important partner, uh, in that, and that the co- collaboration be, um, at our level as well. Um, I think that's the, the, the most important comment I had. Certainly, you know, that would mean that we would get notice of meetings that are in our communities and, um, and collaborate, um... Okay, and, and again, uh, you're, when, your comments, and, and I have the utmost respect, of course, for Dr. Height and the administration, but even in your comments, you're saying collaborate with Dr. Height. And, and w- the Board of Education is policymaker and decision-makers, as well as very engaged people in our respective communities, um, uh, think that that would strengthen the, um, the work that's being done. Thank you.
Sure. Well, you walk away from every encounter, uh, with lessons learned, and I, I, so I, I have one, I do, uh, I'm, I'm clear in understanding the passion of the board, um, and understood the role, um, and the importance of having the board engaged. I will say I understand it better now, um, and, and understand about reaching out. That, with, with respect to the comment about the website, I don't want that to be misunderstood. Um, we, we are, we're building the website now. What I had mentioned to Ms. Waller is that she had information she wanted to give us, that there's a link that I can send now where it, where information can be added, if there are ideas in a particular area, you could actually give us information, but I wasn't suggesting that, um, that, that, that you needed to go there to, to get information right now. Uh, in terms of getting information out to you, we will. I think I can only emphasize the fact that we are just in the stage of planning right now. Not to say that nothing's been done, but, you know, the, the things that have been done, have been done because there've been, there's been a ride through a neighborhood, we saw a house that, abandoned house that had a tree on it, well, we weren't going to wait until next month when we start in earnest with our deployment plan, so we got the tree off the house the next day. So, we have done some things, but we have not done a lot. Again, we're still planning, which is why the answers about what the role is, what it is that we need you to do, would, they will come, uh, you know, come via the, um, the deployment plans. I think that when I go back to the office, I'll also talk, uh, to the team about, um, a better way to engage the board, y- the way that we've engaged, um, Dr. Height and his staff through the six, uh, team members, because again, I mean, you've, a number of you have shared information and ideas that I think are important. It, it shows, uh, the value that we would miss if there was not, uh, better outreach and communication and collaboration with, with the board.
Thank you very much, and, um, I, I guess I, I'm highlighting if, if you're making, and you say in the, the, of course, the schools are going to be key to success in these communities, and it, but if there's a plan for the school plan, that, that, that there'd be partners from the Board of Education in those plans, and not just after those plans, um, have been, uh, determined.
Okay.
Particularly, I mean, you know, certainly, we care about our communities, but we do have a role in regards to, um, whatever is the thinking in regards to the schools.
Thank you, Ms. Higgins. Ms. Jackson?
Good afternoon, and thank you for your presentation. Um, I, I was kind of on the same line of thought as Mr. Armwood, and I know, know you addressed his, uh, suggestions, but I just wanted to note that I think that it would be great to like have this as, emphasize this as a service learning hour opportunity for students, because when you say things like deliver meals and have teas with senior citizens, I think those are definitely things that students should be involved in, and, um, also, I think that would also help when it comes to sustainability, because I know right now we have a lot of emphasis in this program, because it's just starting, but eventually, once we get to the neighborhoods to what we want them to be, it'd be great to have these young community members involved in keeping it up through these, uh, and through, by engaging in such community service projects. And I do think that like high schools and, uh, the SGA's, National Honor Societies, I think this gives a great opportunity for them to do community service through this project, and it would be great for this to kind of be something spearheaded by the school system to get our students involved in their communities as well.
Thank you.
Ms. Boston?
Um, I want to echo the, the consent of my board colleagues here, that we do appreciate this initiative that the county- this initiative that the county executive is putting forward, because it's definitely, definitely needed. I would like to know, if some of us are residents of those communities, some of those communities that you speak of, what is the partnerships that you are having with the municipalities, if there are some, in this, in this approach?
That's a good question. I actually got that question yesterday when we talked to the apartment owners. We have reached out to municipalities. The primary focus area that has municipalities in it would be the East Riverdale Bladensburg area. On that particular team, one thing I didn't mention, this was actually on TV, you, you might know that the county executive enjoys running, and he runs with the police cadets once or twice a week in the morning. And the police cadets are now running through each one of the, they're doing their, their training runs through each one of these six areas. And the, the police chief from one of the municipalities in that area participated in the run a cou- a couple of weeks ago. As they were going through, he was pointing out various different issues within the community. One, that particular, on that particular team, the East Riverdale Bladensburg team, there is actually a representative, two representatives, Sergeant Scott Davis and Private Dugas, that are actually members of that particular team. So, we, we have reached out to the municipalities, and our municipal liaison, Beatrice Tigler, is actually the special assistant to the DCAO for that particular team. So, we purposely placed her there because of the presence of the municipalities and then actually got the municipalities to be involved on the team. And we'll, we'll also coordinate the, the deployment of the services with them since the municipalities do deliver some of the services in those areas.
Thank you, Ms. Boston. Mr. Seaman, my co- a couple of my colleagues have indicated they want to do a, a next round of questions for you. But before we do that, if I could just maybe put this in a different perspective, not even different, but in what better initiative, if you will, to demonstrate not just to the citizens of Prince George's County, but to the state and to this region, that Prince George's County is actually collaborating? So, what I mean by that is all too often, we spend more time defending ourselves, we spend more time trying to explain that, you know, second from the bottom does not mean that Prince George's County Public School students are failing. All too often, we spend so much time trying to convince our students that it is okay, that they're doing good work. And so, we find ourselves constantly in this vortex, if you will, of trying to not only convince those on the outside or in the region that we're a viable community, but we spend far too much time doing that within our own community. And so, while I want you to take what my colleagues had to say very seriously, I also want to just put it in the realm of, this is a perfect opportunity for us to really come together as a community, if in fact this initiative is going to take off the way that it should. And when we talk about education, and that seems to be the number one issue, you know, when we talk about education, it's the number one issue around whether or not people are going to come to the county, whether or not people are going to leave this county, and whether or not people feel that they are getting the services that they need. But in doing that, if we can't, if we're not able as a board and county executive and superintendent team to say that I know what the county executive means when he puts out an initiative, we want to be partners in this process, because we believe that it is our responsibility and our duty and our obligation, our need to, to get beyond those negative images of our county. And we can't do that if we can't do it together. So, I certainly hope that the comments that you've heard are taken in the context of how are we communicating our image in this county? And so, you know, I, I won't belabor the point, but it takes longer to, to describe that students in this county have consistently for year after year after year been improving, outpacing their, their subgroups in other counties. It takes a longer time to explain that the growth model, that students in this county, when you give them the challenge and stop telling them that they're at the bottom because they're not at the bottom, it takes more time to have that conversation than it does to say, aren't you number 24 out of 1 through 24? And if we're all not saying that message, then we'll never get where we need to get. But we can't say that message together if we're not on the same page, or at least if we're not collaborating, if you will, in a way that we honor and, and recognize our various roles. So, I accept the fact that, you know, everybody doesn't get what the statute says about the role of the Board of Education versus the role of the superintendent. When it all comes down to it, that's not as important as what is the work we're doing? How are we doing that in a way that demonstrates in this region and to our citizens that we're together on the work? So, when I get asked a question about the county executive's initiative, I want to be able to say, I think that's a great idea, and the county executive, or Mr. Seaman came and told us about that, you know, months beforehand, and we all sat down at the table and tried to figure out how we were going to do it. I know that that's not going to be the case in every scenario, but Mr. Baker has indicated that he's the education county executive, and we actually accept that title for him. And that being the case, that means that while Superintendent Height can give us some information, because he got it from the county executive, at the end of the day, he still would have to bring issues back to the Board from a policy perspective to be voted on. And so, if we can just take away today, this presentation and our work as we're committing to communicating to the community and to the region, that it's a different time, we're not going to, we will no longer be this entity of negative conversation about our students, about who's on the bottom, about, you know, how this school affects this community. I'll stop at that point. But I just want to make sure that we put it in perspective of what, what our, what we believe this to be and how important we think it is for its success.
Thank you. I, I will say this, I was going to ask you a question, but then you answered it. And that was, it, it struck me to ask you what you would have preferred that we would have done in communicating this, and you answered it, and you said, come to you before now. We couldn't have come three months ago because we weren't, you, we weren't there yet with respect to the plan, but certainly you can always come earlier. But the other thing I wanted to mention, because I share your concern about the perception of the county, we did have discussions during the planning about this, about if we, if we're going to have economic development in our county, if we're going to develop the metro stations that we have, if we're going to attract young people who maybe work in the District of Columbia and are looking for more affordable housing in the district that might want to move near a metro station. We've got a great area out, you know, where the Bus Boys and Poets is in Prince George's Plaza, and it's growing, it's walkable, it has two metro stations out there. If we're going to get that to happen, you have to think, well, what are the major things that affect that? And the two things we talked about, frankly, were crime and education. And what we said, just so I, I'll be candid, we're sharing with you what we said, that we get crime statistics every day. I get a report every day, and I know how many homicides we have, I know what percentage down we are, I look at it every day. And that is, it's in a fishbowl. I mean, the, the media reports it, when they reported last year, you know, we had a 10% decrease in overall crime and a 12% decrease in violent crime, but what got reported was that the number of homicides went up by five. So, we understand that that's a key number, the police department does. And when you look at that and you look at education, the thing about, this is just my perspective, because I'm no expert, but the statistics don't come out every day. So, what we did was we said, if we're going to work on perception, and this is when, you know, the police presented us with the six areas, and then we validated it by looking at the other statistics, and thankfully, there was, you know, an overlap, we said that that number, that violent crime number is actually the number that probably will change the perception of the county faster than anything else, because it, because we can direct more directly at it, and we get the statistics all the time. I know with a lot of standardized test scores and other things, they don't come out as frequently. I know there are systems to, you know, measure scores within the schools, so we could, that's something maybe that we'll be able to do later on. But I totally share your concern and the Board's concern about the perception in the county, because, you know, counties that have high levels, areas, neighborhoods that have high levels of economic development, where people have jobs, where property values are higher, the education's higher as well, and the crime is lower. And so, that's what my, my reference to the fact that all these things are interrelated, not that we're just realizing that they're, that they're interrelated.
Thank you very much for that. And then I would just add to that last piece, just that, I think the other thing about it is that we have to do a better job of actually talking about the successes of our school district, because, because that is, it is a reality that oftentimes our, our citizens aren't updated about the success of our schools. And so, while you get those statistics daily, I understand that, that point, we just have to do a better job of doing that. Okay, so that.
Can I say that, I'm, I'm a statistical guy, I'm an accountant by training. You, you give me some statistics, and I need to seek them out myself, but I will tout the work of, of the system and the Board and the improvements that are made, and I'll work it right into my, my stump speech, so to speak, when I, when I talk about the county and, and our assets and our benefits. I'd love to and should talk more about what the, the progress that's being made in the schools.
I think that's the best thing you said.
With specifics.
Okay. Thank you so much. Okay, so round two, colleagues, three minutes, Ms. Waller, Mr. Armwood, and Ms. Boston.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Certainly, this has just been a great discussion this, this afternoon. On your Transforming Neighborhoods Initiative, Improve Key Indicators in the Targeted Areas, I would like to suggest that you add transportation. When I look at the indicators that you have listed, all of these are really affected employment, I mean, transportation affects employment, the activities for our youth. And in the northwestern part of the county, I know firsthand how hard it is to get to other areas, whether you're a senior, students, when they get internships, parents have to get cars to the students, so transportation is paramount to transforming our neighborhoods. Secondly, I'm referring back to my colleague, Ms. Boston, we were mentioning the municipalities. And just since you're data-driven, and I know we all are, I have five municipalities in School Board District III, which encompasses that Langley Park area. And so, within the residents that reside in that area, I would say half of those, the high school students go to one high school, which is impacted in the Langley Park area. Recently, as I've been driving throughout this area, and I'm sure you will have the information, but I'm becoming more concerned about these foreclosed properties that I'm seeing. I'm seeing too many, the grass is grown up, I don't know what is happening, I don't know how, how it's going to affect our numbers of students in the schools, which that's something our staff would be looking at. The second thing that I would like to say to Dr. Height, and I see he's not there, and to you, Mr. Seaman, is that, and I often say this, is that we're in this together, and there's nothing as great as teamwork. We want to work with you as a board, and there's this big word everybody throws around all the time, it's like it's a new word, it's a catch-all word, as far as I'm concerned, called transparency. And I guess it is a catch-all word, whatever fits into transparency. That's what I'm going to ask for in regards to this Transforming Neighborhoods Initiative. I would like for our communities, our Board of Education, and our business board, everybody to be in, I think, I know you all are in the planning process, but from what you've heard to date, there, I believe we provided some value-add to it. We don't want to come in at the end of this process, but there are some pieces that if we don't add them now, you're going to have to go back and regroup, or there are going to be things that's going to change. My last question is, in light of the discussion today, where do we go from here? Perhaps we need to have another session such as this, that we need to be brought up to date so that our constituents can understand where we are and where we are going. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. With respect to transportation, I totally agree with you that we need to look at that. That's, you know, something that we were looking at even prior to, you know, starting this initiative. You know, something that's transportation-related, that was one of the indicators, was the pedestrian injuries and fatalities, which I think actually are fairly high in the Langley Park area.
They are.
Unfortunately, and not to mention something negative, but the county leads the state in pedestrian injuries and fatalities. So, that's something that we do have to work on with, you know, better sidewalks and, you know, streetlights and what have you, and making sure that people are being, you know, sort of guided to walk in, in safer areas, and looking at areas where, where, where things are happening and, and coming up with strategies to deal with that. And, you know, the council governments has a streetwise program, and that, they actually had an event in, in Prince George's a few weeks ago. So, there, there is some, some focus and understanding of the need there. The foreclosed properties are, I mean, it's a big deal. I, you know, they're, I think people know that the property values of the surrounding properties are impacted by foreclosed properties. One of the reasons why I talk about deploying more resources from our code inspectors into these areas is to make sure that we're dealing with foreclosed properties that were, that are unkept and contribute to the blight. I think we, everybody knows that there's recently been an award made from some of the mortgage companies to the state, a large sum of money, I can't remember how much it is, but, and the Attorney General is starting a, a task force that the county housing director is a part of, to, to decide how that money will be used within the state. And certainly, a lot of that, because we have one of the higher foreclosure rates in the state, a lot of that money will be coming to Prince George's County. We have the Neighborhood Stabilization Program that a lot of work's been done there in Sutland area with the Neighborhood Stabilization Program. In terms of, you talked about adding things now, and if we don't add them now, and then you talked about what's next. Well, you have to give me a minute to think about what's next. You certainly have given me a lot to think about, but I do know, can't tell you exactly how, but what we do need to do is make sure that we get the input and ideas of the Board, particularly within, you know, the areas that, that you represent. And so, Mr. Rhodes will, will help me to do that. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you so very much. And hopefully, my, my comments, I, I, you know, I want it to be value-add, and because I love this county, I love the community in which I reside, and certainly, those students are the most precious ones to me, and I want the best for everyone. Thank you.
I'm writing down what everybody's saying.
Thank you so much for your hard work and your dedication as a public servant.
Thank you.
Colleagues, Mr. Seaman has another engagement that he must attend after this meeting, and I would ask that, it's been said, it's been answered, it's been said and answered a few times, I think he gets it. And so, if we would not repeat the same thing, and I tried my best to wrap that piece of it at least together, that being the case, the last three, and we will close out this, this session, is Mr. Armwood, Ms. Boston, and Ms. Johnson. And then he has to go.
Thank you. I'm not going to repeat how, we, we really do appreciate what we're, what you're bringing us.
You can repeat that.
Huh?
You can repeat that.
We really do appreciate what you're doing and the abuse you're taking today.
No, it's fine.
You mentioned the ICBN network, the inter-county broadband network. One of the things I asked this county executive about when they kicked this off was the use of transceivers, because we have a lot of extra bandwidth in those networks, and it's a very simple fact to, item to put transceivers on schools, public buildings, to serve neighborhoods. Businesses may use those networks during the day, I understand reselling it, but in the evenings, you have a lot of bandwidth. You could have a real strong impact on our children and on our educational system by making. making that network available to children. Parents have computers, digital devices, everybody has a smartphone, but they don't have reliable internet access. And that is something that could really have a strong impact in those target areas. Thank you.
Ms. Boston?
Mr. Seaman, one of the things I did notice on your slides were, were you actually addressing the issues of substance abuse. I didn't see that on there, and also gang initiatives, because those two problems, as they start in the community, they also filter into our schools. So I'm very concerned about these two issues, and wondering what initiatives you're putting forward on these.
Sure. Let me just say to Mr. Armwood, I noted that, and I'm going to talk to our OITC director about what we're doing with transceivers as it relates to the ICBN. Ms. Boston, with respect to your question, I'm glad you mentioned that. Because one thing that was noticeably absent from the indicators were anything really related to health. And that was because we couldn't get the health data from the Department of, the State Department of Mental Health and Hygiene by census-designated place. I think that there, well, I know there's a map, there may be one over in this building somewhere, of the key health indicators in the county, similar to what we showed there. And it, and it colored in, in areas of intensity. We tried to get that same data, because there were like 13 measures. It was low birth weight, substance abuse, chronic disease, that we, that we actually have a map of over in my conference room. And we tried to get that data so that we could include it, but we couldn't get it in time by census-designated place. But when you look at that map, and you look at this one, again, the areas overlap, they're very similar in the areas inside the Beltway. We also are, like I said, we, we have a public health impact study that's been done by the University of Maryland School of Public Health, and there's a lot of data in there about issues with asthma in the county. That was a little surprising to me. It was surprising to me that Anne Arundel County actually has a, more cardiac issues than Prince George's County does. There's really some surprising information in there. And as that information goes in the final form, we will be able to use that, that data to help inform us here. But there was certainly a realization that there's a direct link between healthcare and education, that healthcare is better in areas where there are higher levels of, of education. So we certainly appreciate that, and you are correct, that that was absent, but it wasn't intentional. But, but we did know that it wasn't there, but we, like I said, compared the maps and felt like we still had the right areas going. I should also mention to you that we are, we have contractors that contract with our social services and family services department to do home visits and other things, for example, to reduce infant mortality rate. We're targeting them into these areas as well. So we're bringing every resource that we have, and particularly in the health area as well.
Ms. Johnson?
Sir, I would like to bring to your attention, please make note, food deserts. We have true food deserts as a result, diabetes, obesity, those issues, that needs to be part of the work that you do. The lack of banks, financial, real financial institutions, as opposed to liquor stores and check cashing stores and et cetera. The increase in carbon emissions in certain communities that are imperiling the life of particularly young children, that is also an important piece. And I bring to your attention the fact that as we're looking at investment, Prince George's County also deserves to have Anne Arundel Mills, Tyson's Corner, that ilk. And I look at Landover Mall, which is gone when it came. I actually lobbied against it in that location, because there was no investment in the community that surrounded it to begin to bring it into concert with what it takes to sustain, sustain that kind of financial investment. And thus, it became a feeding ground for people who saw it as an opportunity for quick cash items that they could not or would not purchase, and it was awful. And so, I want you to look at sustainability as you look to bring in businesses. And lastly, I would bring to your attention the 2010-11 report on the status of girls and women in Prince George's County. Absolutely incredibly concerning data about the status of women and girls in Prince George's County. It will give you a good place to begin to view at a closer range what is happening in our county. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I see Dr. Height has left the building. I'm kidding, he's left the room for a minute. Dr. Coleman, that means you're in charge. So I think as the agenda goes, we have followed all of what's on the agenda today. Mr. Seaman, I want to thank you again for.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
I want to thank you again for the presentation. We look forward to continuing to collaborate with you. If you need anything from us, please feel free to let us know. And you can go on to the other meeting that I think you have coming up shortly. You're very welcome. There he is.
He's still in the building. Mr. Seaman, thank you for the presentation. It's been very informative. Thank you.
All right. We do have to go back, colleagues. We have one other matter, legal matter that has to be managed in exec session, so we won't be closing out at this time. But have we completed the agenda? I believe we have. No other business? That's correct. Okay, so we have no, any questions about follow-up items? Seeing none, okay, we will reconvene in executive session at this time. Thank you. Following the executive session, we have a policy review committee meeting. We have one, one more report we have to get from council. Oh, motion to adjourn. It's been properly moved, taken to adjourned meeting. Well, we can come back and do the confirming. We're adjourning this meeting. Thank you for coming.